The weather and not the.
Okay. All right.
We can't hear you guys if you can hear me.
Now we can.
Others want to go. Buy their ticket.
Be multiple people can be at the event.
You just have to give.
Talk about town stuff. Yeah.
So I'll just bring it up at the end again.
Yeah, I know that's one of the service people, most more people know there, yeah.
Yeah.
But please start.
What's your?
No.
I do we have an agenda to have a.
We don't have an agenda.
Okay.
Um Representative Velasco just was coming in to tour. A few things here in town and wanted to have an opportunity to spend some time talking with you folks. Um, and so we just set it up after the tour as our work session tonight.
Okay.
Um, to give you guys an opportunity to talk about everybody you want to talk about. All the good things that are going on.
Good things. Okay.
You can talk about bad things too.
Good things or bad things. Okay. Well, good evening. I guess we should, we can introduce ourselves.
I'm Ken Engelhardt. The newest trustee.
And I'm Chris Klassen. Been a trustee since twenty twenty two.
Trustee super.
Mayor Parkin Henry, thanks for the tour.
Uh, Mayor Keith Reichel, but on the board since uh, two thousand twelve.
And Justin Britton, I've been on the board for a bit, I love P and T for a minute. And then uh, we love stuff in towns. Being Walter stay busy.
Okay.
Well, nice to meet you all. I'm Representative Velasco. And just had the pleasure of spending some time uh, with your town manager. Um, you know, some of the the things that I really care about are community resiliency. I was a wildland firefighter and worked as a public information officer. And I know how huge those impacts are of natural disasters, especially fires to our region. Um, so you know, the the water facility that we went to tour today, like that is a consequence of the fire scar from the Grizzly Creek fire and that debris that flew that that came down the river after we had those mudslides that took off a whole deck of I seventeen, the canyon. So you know, I think that the more we can be resilient, the the best for our communities, but we we definitely see also how these big projects are are pieced together with funding from the federal government, from the state and and all the efforts that y'all do to find um, those grant opportunities to be able to maximize your your investment and your infrastructure. Um, you know, but another thing I I have been serving for two years. Uh, this was my first term. I am running for reelection. And you know, it has been an honor to serve you. Uh, the district goes from parachute all the way to Aspen. We have a very diverse district. I have passed about thirty three bills of legislation from addressing I seventy and making sure that we can travel safely um, to water quality in mobile home parks to a lot of fire uh, investments. Uh, I served as the the chair of the Wildfire Matters Committee. Uh, I also serve in the Appropriations Committee, agriculture, natural resources, and energy and environment. So you know, very, very proud of a lot of the work that we've done. Uh, just got back from the special session uh, in Denver where we we did uh, another reduction in property tax um, for for community members and also for um, not only for residential, but also for commercial property. Um, we know one thing that I could elevate in is the need for sustainable funding sources for fire districts. We know that the the cost of responding to fire um, continues to increase as well as the cost of everything else. So I know that in in our community, housing is a a big issue. So I I wanted to come come in and uh, and chat with y'all tour some of the big projects in the community. And you know, some of the things that I saw was really um, how people are so proud to live here, uh, you know, from the workers at the water plant to Sarah at High Waters Farm. Uh, we heard that we served, you know, like what a wonderful gem that we have in the district uh, with those those improvements that that were made there um, with the swings and and that was also with support from the state, you know, that that land conservation program um, to be able to take advantage of of landowners who want to protect those those lands for the future. So very excited to be here with y'all and chatting. Uh, this year I'm doing a a district tour where I'm visiting with all the municipalities in the district. Um, yes, definitely would love to hear, um, you know, how we can continue to collaborate. If y'all need support, uh, we have offered if you need connecting with the the different departments in the state or you or if you have issues, for example, with the railroad uh, companies, with the utility companies, we are also happy to to help because we want to make sure that that we have a strong voice um, here in in our community.
Okay.
I just want to thank you for everything you've done for the fire department. I was retired from Silt here for twenty five years, so really appreciate that. Anything you can do to help. And you said wild land and that is really big, you know, I mean rightful and relentless. Really appreciate that.
Thank you.
So I think, oh, tell us a little bit about the special session and how it came to be in terms of what was passed and who drove it.
Yeah, so you know, this year we have the the longest ballot we have ever had in the history of of um, our elections. There's many ballot initiatives that are being brought forward that community members are gonna vote on. Uh, but two of those were were gonna be really catastrophic for local governments, school districts, and the state. So we, there was two ballot initiatives, uh, ballot fifty and ballot one oh eight, which would have decimated our budget. Um, so those were caps uh, on property taxes that were not with language that that was not brought in by experts. It was brought in by special interests and um, uh, one billionaire in in specific. So that's why we had to go back. Uh, we had already done appropriate tax reduction this this session, our regular session, but we we had to go back and do a further reduction uh, to get those ballot initiatives to come off the ballot. Um, just because it would have been catastrophic for us um, to keep those and for them to pass. So you know, one of the things that we did was get rid of the budget stabilization factor for funding our schools, which is huge. And we are now at those levels of funding from nineteen eighty nine, which are not sufficient still. Uh, we also um, re- reworked the funding formula for schools. So or or rural districts are able to get more money and more funding because of the rural factor. So we would have, we had some guardrails on that bill that said if we don't have the funding, we're not gonna be able to implement the new funding formula. Um, so you know, these these ballot initiatives were just really, really, really bad. So that's why we went back and did a further reduction. But I do believe that our local governments need other avenues of funding, you know, I think um, some of the things that we're looking at, for example, are that the real estate transfer fee for communities to be able to collect um, some funding for affordable housing. Um, we're also looking at the um, an occupancy tax. Um, in many, I don't know how persistent it is in in tilt, but in in many of our communities, we have many second homeowners with homes that sit vacant. Um, even in Glenwood Springs, the the owner occupied uh, rate is only forty percent. So there's, I think that there's a need, you know, for for supporting local control uh, and for local communities to be able to have those funds that they need for for local services. And and I do believe that we we haven't done a great job of explaining, you know, where those funds go, like they go to schools and fire districts and there they go to um, to our day to day services, you know, which are not growing government, are not. Um, you know, they're they're definitely very vital and important. Um, but with that together is also how our property values have skyrocketed. Um, so I do believe that there's, there was a need for relief for for homeowners, so that we try to have, you know, that that balance of making sure that we're funding our local services while giving community members a relief and keeping those ballot initiatives off the ballot.
So I got a question. I kind of read a little bit of those couple that were coming off. Was there anything on there that was gonna hurt, that should have maybe stayed on that or that gonna hurt the taxpayers or was it all that, you know, I kind of read some of it, but I didn't read the whole thing. I didn't know where they were coming off.
Yeah, I think that the goal of the ballot initiatives were to to limit how much the property taxes can go up, which I I think in theory would be a good thing, but without having enough um, flexibility for growth or um, school districts and or state would be in the red. I mean, I I think many of our fire districts are already in the red. So you know, that, so that was the uh, the balance that we tried, you know, to to keep, making sure that we had, we gave that relief to homeowners and property owners while also funding or uh, really needed local services.
Okay.
I do, and one thing I'd like to bring up, um, just that that I felt really frustrated with with local government is that we're, we're building this this water plant. And the process for that and was we had to publicly state what our budget was before it went out to bid. So when we went out to when we say our budget's twenty eight million dollars, the bids come in at twenty eight million dollars. And then we had to have those numbers to get the funding and the grants process to make the project happen. Doing it that way takes away the whole competitive nature of doing anything. Um, you know, I I don't think it's just our water plant. I think it comes to projects with C dot. Are ridiculously overpriced for what's happening because it's we have this much money. That's where our our bids are at. There's no, there's no competitive nature to government projects anymore.
Okay.
So I I mean, I don't know what the solution to that is, but I just, you know, while you're here, I do want to let you add something that's very frustrating to local government. I think as a town, we are held to a very tight budget numbers. I mean, our budget numbers have to match at the end of the year. There is no extra fluff that we get sitting around. When you get to the county, it goes a little bit away. When you get to the state, the state numbers are all imaginary numbers. Um, so I I think there needs to be more oversight on how government funds are spent so that we are not wasting taxpayers' dollars. I I go to Denver and watch these giant projects happen on I seventy when we have an overpass that needs to be rebuilt. But it keeps getting delayed because another project needs that that money and that that project, in my opinion, is I don't know, being a money hungry waste. I don't know how else to.
Well, I think, I think the hard part is that it's not only silk. It's Newcastle, Silk, Parachute. All three communities need a new interchange. And all three communities are faced with the prospect of every time a development come in, comes in, C dot goes, well, how much money are you gonna give us towards this project? And we have no idea when the project's actually going to occur. But on top of that, because these interchanges aren't getting done, it's an impediment to economic development. We have planned growth south of the interstate between the interstate and the river. I think some of the delay that we've seen in the actual development is because these developers are cognizant of the fact that at some point in the future that interchange is gonna be rebuilt. And it's gonna dramatically impede their ability to operate. And and so it's, it's, it seems like there's this propensity to spend all the money on the east side of the state on the thought range. And as you come west and go out state, there's not a lot of consideration that those projects need to be done. I mean, when you look at the three interchanges that I mentioned, that's probably two hundred million dollars worth of infrastructure. We're never gonna build it.
You know, as you just mentioned, C dot, if you, and once you get past the ma- major ski areas, you're not getting anything.
Yeah, once you're going with the funding rises up.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for sharing that because I um, that is also something that we have heard in, you know, from parachute, from Newcastle, just on on the need for continuing to invest in infrastructure and how a lot of the the projects that happen really are depending on on state dollars and and that state uh, prioritization of the projects and how you know, that like we might be, we might get it on the list for, you know, twenty thirty, you know, so it's like, so I definitely need, I I want to look into that to make sure that that we are getting our fair share, that we are getting the investment that we need for communities to grow. I mean, I think that um, you know, the I see a lot of of value in continuing to invest in economic development, in making sure that people are working where they live on um, on, you know, taking care of our roads, you know, so I I do know that we are working on major projects um, right now, but I'm happy to to make sure that that I am advocating for the the things that that y'all are seeing coming up, you know, so definitely would love to to partner in those to make sure that I'm asking the right questions.
And it's, it's not necessarily fair share, um, because fair share is always gonna spend money on the population basis.
Yeah.
I mean, Colorado has two highways. It has I seventy and it has I two twenty, or twenty five. That's really, you know, yes, there are smaller highways throughout the state that need work too, but our main corridor is I seventy and I twenty five, and we need to make sure I, personal opinion, that that infrastructure is is up to date.
Yeah.
That includes all these interchanges. You can look at our interchange, we've had a fat futility because there's no uh, separation between non-motorized traffic and motorized traffic. And we, you know, we're working right now on a pedestrian bridge. It's a daunting process. That's a eighteen million dollar project. We don't have eighteen million dollars to build that.
Okay.
Um, but we have a a serious safety concern of transporting people back and forth from the south side, which is south of the interstate and the north side of the community. And uh, but that interchange is an integral piece of that. You know, to piggyback on what they were talking about, you know, I've lived here a lot of years. It seems like I seventy from bail to the top of I seventy has been in construction for every twenty seven years and it's unlimited funds. I mean, every time you know, they're doing the whole downside, you know, it's just seems like they're just unlimited funds for that part of the highway. We can't get anything for here.
No. And I I I agree with all of your comments and, you know, maybe on a smaller issue, just just the communication with us and C dot, because you know, we're wanting something simple, like the speed limit on a main street reduced and C dot says no, but it's almost like, it's almost like every time we ask, we're, we're, we're up against a brick wall, you know, it just, it just seems like there needs to be a better communication and more, oh, hey, how can we help you guys out with this issue as opposed to you know, we're, we're C dot, no, you're not gonna do that.
Yeah, no, our office is always happy to help notch them and force them to come to the table and have those conversations. We had a um, an issue where I eighty two needed to be mowed because of fire risk and they were behind and we were happy to to notch them and make sure that that was getting done. Um, so they definitely um, listen when whenever representatives are asking them to come to the table, um, so we're please, please reach out. We want to to make sure that we're advocating for for district and that or or projects are prioritized.
Well, I I'll just say it, that, I mean, we're very appreciative of all the help we got with water plant. Um, you know, we talked about it, it was a twenty eight million dollar plant that that the town had financed about eighteen million.
Mm hmm.
Um, I'm not sure it would have gotten done without the assistance that we got through the various agencies that we work. So we're very appreciative of of the help that we got. There's a lot more that we need to do though.
Yes.
And there's, you know, these, these, these items don't get any cheaper.
Mm hmm.
And um, the 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 price tag just keeps going up and and we're looking at this pedestrian bridge. It started out as a fourteen million dollar project. Now it's an eighteen million dollar project. By the time we put a funding stack together, it's probably a twenty million dollar. But it's something that's necessary for the community, especially as we continue.
You really can. I guess I, is that probably all?
No, go ahead.
I guess I'd like to hear a little bit about the where you see the state going with affordable housing. I, I think that's a a big point of intention between different groups of people of whether it should be the burden of the citizens for low income housing or whether it should be private investment or whether it should be government that takes care of that. So I guess what's the vision for affordable housing?
Yeah, so you know, a couple of years ago, we had a big housing bill that that did not pass because it was too much, too fast, but then a lot of the pieces came back this session. Um, so for example, um, a lot of the requirements also did not apply to us, did not apply to rural communities. It was mostly for the the urban communities, um, like making sure that they're building next to public transit. Um, like uh, removing occupancy limits, um, like making sure that um, yeah, so the, where, we also passed some protections for for renters. But the the affordable housing issue, I do feel like is that uh, one of the the big priorities for our community and and I do believe that it's our responsibility to be um, to do it in in a way that that it's um, you know, I feel like in our commu- community is like ours, um, but the demand is unlimited, you know, like I I, when I, for example, when I talk to some of my colleagues that, um, I feel like we have a lot of people that want to live here. Um, and we don't want it to just be available for wealthy people, you know, we want their teachers or nurses or firefighters to be able to to afford to live here. Um, so I do feel that we need to be intentional of making sure that we have pockets of affordable housing. So some of the things that we have done um, have been around protecting mobile mobile home parks. You know, those are unsubsidized affordable housing projects um, that that exist in our communities. Um, we also are seeing a lot of partnership of employers uh, and counties and municipalities to to have those those affordable housing projects, also partnerships with with Habitat for Humanity. Um, so for example, and we are seeing this all of, all across the district from parachute to Aspen. Uh, we are seeing that the school districts that that are starting to have those affordable housing projects for teachers because we, in our state, we are one of the states that pays the lowest uh, for teachers. So you know, so I do think that or we have to be very intentional of of making sure that we have that that affordable housing stock available. Um, and and that people are able to, you know, that we don't continue to be displaced um, and moving further and further west.
Yeah, because it'd be nice for essential workers, like teachers and people to work and deliver the community they teach in
Yes.
versus having to like, I'm not sure how many teachers that teaches at the high school in Aspen, live in Aspen. Quite a very.
But they're in employee house.
Or they're. Or they're in employee house, which is we've had conversations about that on the board sometimes with employer led.
Employer that affordable housing was tried at the end of the nineteenth, early twentieth century, and you just ended up having company towns where if you left your job, you also lost all your housing for your family and it became a form of endangered servitude. That's, that's the risk, right, is now all of a sudden you and your family are displaced if you change jobs. That to me is nearly as great a risk as all the other ones that have already been mentioned. There's also, and you brought it up previously, Mr. Mayor, there's the supply versus demand argument that we can't rely on one source for affordable housing. It can't just be communities. It can't just be employers. It's really a hybrid model. Everybody needs to pay a little
Yeah.
so that not just essential workers, but I think about people who work in the service industries, people who deliver pizza, people who wait tables, our bartenders, people who work at dry cleaners. Everybody should have the ability to live here.
Yes. Yeah, and we we also started the the middle income housing authority to to start finding those solutions for for middle, middle income um, housing. I mean, I I when we were turning with parachute, I mean, they were telling us that that their new construction um, housing stock was around four hundred thousand. So I would say that that's middle income, you know, that's, that's not um, what a um, an essential worker would be making. So I think that the range, you know, we're, we're trying all the different approaches from um, it would, they also was a ADU regulation to make it easier for people to build ADUs in the urban communities. Um, for our rural communities, one of the the requirements that we made was that there was um, housing assessments um, to make sure that we're identifying what those needs are. And and I think for us, we have had many, many housing assessments that have been done in the region, in in the different communities. Um, so like, you know, definitely looking for for those um, innovative solutions and partnerships to continue increasing the the stock of affordable housing.
This is your time.
Anybody? I don't have anything else really on my list, though, but.
What do you, what do you see on the horizon from the state, anything? I know you're facing reelection, but what are you, I mean, you're in the state house, what's coming next year?
Yeah, so I can share some of the things that I that I'm looking at, you know, so I, serving in the Wildfire Matters Committee, one of the things that we have seen are power short offs because of we- weather events. Um, this, this already happened in Boulder where fifty thousand people um, just didn't have power. Power was shut off because of a fire, fire risk. And only twenty thousand of them go to an alert. So we continue to see the issues when it comes to emergency alerting. That's a whole another bucket, but we are working on having some guidelines around um, power short offs because of weather events. So making sure that the utilities are working with emergency management uh, emergency managers and making sure that they're working on um, sheltering and energy storage for community members, for example, that need medical equipment um, and cannot be without electricity. But even one of the things that that we learned from the water plant was that they do not have a generator. So if we were to shut off power because of weather event or fire risk, then we don't have potable water, you know, so like, I think that there's a lot of of pieces to that puzzle, uh, even medical facilities, you know, what do we do when the hospital doesn't have power? So that's, that's one of the things that I'm working on and and we have a working draft uh, on that legislation. Uh, we're also looking at protections for outdoor workers against extreme heat. So our western slope and southern area of the state will continue to see increased temperatures. Um, and and we we have research that says that whenever there's heat exhaustion, um, you know, heat stroke, there's more accidents in the workplace. So you know, some of the provisions, we already have these protections for agricultural workers. And what they, they include are access to water, access to shade, uh, access to breaks and education around identifying those symptoms of heat stroke and heat exhaustion, which are are pretty common sense. which are are pretty common sense. And and those guidelines are also coming from OSHA at at the federal level. Um yeah, so we're also working on that, the real estate transfer fee, um which would just left to the prohibition so that each community would create their own programs and have their own guardrails. Yeah, but for for next year, I you know, I we we will continue, I think, to work in like clean energy and protecting our water resources. Um so in Colorado, we created, um we want to to incentivize all different types of energy, you know, from geothermal to hydrogen. Uh we're also doing a study around nu- nuclear as we're moving away from the coal, from coal plants. So our guidelines that we created for hydrogen energy are gonna be used at the federal level for for those those guidelines. And we we did that because there was an opportunity to become a hydrogen hub, uh which at at this point we didn't win. But I think that there's gonna be a lot of opportunity there um in in the the clean energy space, especially so right now, the cheapest energy comes from solar. So the the state of Colorado is a is one of the the great producers of of solar energy where and we are leading the way when it comes to um to the electrification of the state um and investing in clean energy. So I I see, you know, we also passed a law around agrovoltaics, which in you ha- is a partnership for energy and producing energy uh together with our agriculture uh producers. So there's, they're they'll be continuing to, we'll continue to see investment in that.
Do you see, is there anything in the future from Colorado, it's coming EV charging stations? I'm not for or against, but I'm just saying, I know I even on the western slope, we do a lot of camping and traveling. I was amazed some of the little towns don't have EV stations because they can't afford it. Is there anything in Colorado or the, you know, is there anything coming down the pipe where they can, they're gonna have money for the EV stations? It's gonna happen. So I don't know. State's got any money for a site for that or?
I can, I can check in because I know that we we did say that we needed to start making plans around expanding the EV charging infrastructure. Um we we even just had a um a corrections worker that works in Delta, you know, he was asking us, are they gonna put in some EV charging in the corrections facility? Because I do I do think that a lot of people are starting to get those those EV um electric vehicles and see the benefits of them. Um and there there is a need for more infrastructure, so we'd love to to invest in that.
Yeah, because I know, I know, you know, as I say, we, I've talked to different people and I said, you know, it's kind of you know, people come there, but they're afraid, you know, like they have an EV, they don't really want it because they don't have it. You know, what's the next town to charge? And they don't have one and, you know, on the federal level, they did, you know, so we're just gonna ask if the state had anything. I can, I can tell you that the uh we are working with um the Northwest uh Colorado Council of Governments uh put a grant in to put uh EV stations in, one of which would be here at the library. Whether we get that grant or not as well, completely different story.
I have a question about economic development. We discussed it a couple of different times during our three hour tour. Um what what is your own vision of economic development in our region as a whole? And how can you help us achieve those goals?
Yeah, thank you. I I think that there's a lot of opportunity for us, you know, the um I I believe that we have so much talent in the district, you know, from um or graduates from CMC or diverse community, you know, with a lot of people coming coming with their diplomas and now being bilingual, you know, a lot of our schools have bilingual programs. Um so I think that there's a lot of opportunity, you know, the um I I definitely think in the energy sector, there's there's a lot of opportunity there. Um I I do see that there's there's an interest from from our communities to continue to invest on on bringing those economic drivers to their to their towns so that people don't have to drive somewhere else for work, you know, so I I definitely would support, you know, the um that those those plans and strategies for for our different communities. I I think I I heard from you that that's uh one of your priorities. Uh but you know, we we have heard that also from parachute and um and from um yeah, from other other areas in the community, even from from Rifle um and from Newcastle, you know, just making sure that and and just that um that emphasis of, you know, community members having that a good quality of life, which I think is also another thing that that comes up to to the the prioritization list.
I got one more on the the backs of that. Um you know, economic development, multiple things. Um one of the things in this area that seems to be getting pushed to the side is our oil and gas development. It is, that is a viable source of energy for the next fifty years before solar becomes mainstream. Um what's the state doing to make sure that those industries can keep operating?
Yeah, thank you. So you know, we we continue to work with the industry. Uh this year, we passed an increase in oil and gas production, um that oil and gas production fee to invest in transportation. But the the industry was definitely at the table, you know, the way we continue to have conversations with them. One of the things that I want to elevate about our district is that we are seeing, you know, the big players are not here anymore. So a lot of the producers that we have here are smaller producers that are having trouble um following the regulations. So what ha- what is happening is that we're seeing that that we we have the issue of orphan wells, you know, where the state has to invest public dollars on logging those wells. We're also looking at the impact of oil and gas operations. So right now, we're working with the CMC, um which is the regulator of oil and gas and energy on uh cumulative impacts of oil and gas. So one, one of the things that that they proposed in the rulemaking is really a reversal of a lot of the protections. So for example, they're saying that the impact of oil and gas is only is only staying within a mile radius of the producer, which and we know it is not, it's not real. That's not the reality. We have wind, the wind carries um pollution. We also um had a two thousand feet buffer saying that if oil and gas wanted to to produce inside the buffer, this is close to homes, close to schools, um that they needed permission uh from the residents there, and now they're saying that they don't need permission. So I I do invite you to, um if you want to be part of that process, they're they're in the public comment process um of reviewing those um those rulemakings uh to continue to to work with oil and gas. But I would say you know, we are investing in in all of the above and all of the above approach. And you know, I I think it would be really hard to move away from oil and gas from one day to the next. So we continue to work with the industry, you know, to make sure that they follow the rules. Um and that we don't see impacts to to our natural resources and to our community.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, how important is uh the environment and conservation in in your work? You know, as the population continues to grow and sustain, protecting those resources.
Yeah, yeah, that's that's like, that's something huge for me. You know, I definitely am for protecting public lands uh for making sure that we all have access to clean air and clean water. Um we, this this legislative session increased the funding for for that program, the land trust program, where people can donate uh their land and get paid uh market price for those the those lands. And sixty percent of the district is public lands. So we have uh national forest, the most visited national forest with the White River National Forest. We also have BLM uh which is also going through a rulemaking process around their um prioritization. Um we're trying to make sure that they add conservation to that list. Um yeah, so you know, I think that our public lands give us a lot, you know, we're still able to graze on public lands, we're still able to e- use the the mineral mineral rights um and and also recreate, you know, the the state also wants to to invest in in increasing access to to public lands for everyone, but that's definitely one, one of the things that I really care about is conservation.
Okay, I have no one person, nothing else?
Yeah, I have nothing else. Well, we do have a regular meeting at seven, so I would thank you guys for coming in. We appreciate it. Hopefully enjoyed touring our little town of Silt. And uh I uh I have a feeling we'll probably be reaching out to try and lead on C dot about some street limits.
Yeah, yeah, it was really wonderful. Thank you so much for for the tour and definitely would love to to share anything that we're working on for your feedback. Um and would love to invite you to the Capitol if you would like to come. We love to host uh our local community members uh and elected officials. Um that that session goes from January to May. If the please come and visit us at the Capitol.
Thank you very much for being here today. We'll take a quick five minute break and then start a regular session. You are unmuted. All right, can you hear Sheila?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Says we're unmuted. There Sheila, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
We can't hear you.
You can't? Can you hear me?
Let's try that now.
Can you hear me?
And you can hear us?
I can hear you.
Uh, the time is seven to one P M. I will call the meeting to order maybe up roll call please.
Mayor Riechel. Pro Tem Hanrahan. Trustee Brettinall. Trustee Claussen. Trustee Inglehart. Trustee Poston, Trustee Seabert.
All right, they rise to the pledge of allegiance at a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
All right, have you seen it? The first item on tonight's agenda is public comments. Uh, persons desiring to make a public comment on items not on the agenda. Please activate the raised hand function in a meeting program. Or Sheila, any phone call or email in regards to non-agenda items.
I do have three emails that I have received, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, if you would like to read those into the record, please.
Okay, the first one is from Daniel Fairchild. It says, hello Sheila, I was wondering if I, you could share this information with the board on their next meeting. I would appreciate it if they could address the noise ordinance law in Silt. I've had a neighbor that has had multiple parties with live bands playing their music at a level that shakes the dishes in my cabinets. And my five, my house is five lots away and having my kids tell me that they can't sleep because of the music. I have spoken with law enforcement and was informed that the noise ordinance law is very vague and that it doesn't matter how loud the music is as long as it is turned off at midnight. I would appreciate it if the board would consider changing it to nine P M and putting a D B, a decibel level limit on the noise levels. Thanks. Thank you. I appreciate your help with this. The second one is from Nicole Fairchild. Says, good afternoon. I am contacting you after being told that this was the best way to impact. The noise ordinances of the town of Silt. I have lived in Silt for twelve years now and I'm a native to this valley. I'm a third generation Colorado native. I'm proud to call myself a Coloradan and enjoy living in Silt. I enjoy that it is a sleepy town full of hardworking folk. I have allowed and not sent complaints around noise ordinances before. I understand the need to have the freedom to have a good time. I live in a subdivision and our backyards all connect to what somewhat, to make somewhat of an oval. Sounds travel easily. Last weekend, a neighbor chose to have a live band with loudspeakers attached. It began, began around six-ish and went until eleven thirty. All in legal time of the town of Silt. I did however decide to call the Silt Police with the complaint. The music was so loud it was shaking our house that we could barely hear our movie inside even with five point speakers. My neighbor who has four children, including a baby, lives right behind the location of the party. She recorded eighty decibel inside her house with windows and doors closed. At eighty-five decibel, hearing protection is required. The same neighbor has a video of the party and also a recording of the decibel meter. This isn't the first outdoor party in backyards. Others I've almost considered calling in because of the decibel level but never did. This one tops them by far. I'm hearing from neighbors streets away who could hear it clearly. I've asked them to either participate in the town meeting in person or email and hope they will verify by testimony. All in all, I would like to request. Is a curfew that reflects our sleepy town. The party at the pavilion normally ends around nine P M. The rest of the town should reflect that. Also, a decibel level needs to be decided on. Decibel consideration to distance to neighbors or public places. This would make sense to locations outside of the majority of neighborhoods in subdivisions like Silt Mesa, being able to sustain a louder decibel. The decibel level can be set for daytime versus nighttime. Past nine P M. This allows for construction, the party at the pavilion, movie in the parks and the likes. Thank you for hearing my words. We will, with all certainty that there are more than myself who believe in this change. Thank you. And the last one is from a Cheyenne Gori. I won't be able to make the meeting, but I live in Eagles View and agree with changes being made. The extreme noise coming from some neighbors during their parties is not neighborly. I was told to email you for our friend. Nicole, who brought this to the town's attention. Please consider this email my support for changes. I also have two more emails that were sent to me that were not requested to be read into the record, but share the same sentiment.
And do you have anybody signed in?
We have one gentleman that just raised his hand.
Are you signed in for public comment?
Uh, no, just here from you, so.
Okay, okay, yeah.
And I do not have any raised hands on the Zoom meeting.
Okay, thank you very much.
If the board would like. To hear anything about the noise ordinance I have.
Yes, please.
So what your ordinance says is that. I do love that you also have an ordinance prohibiting the throwing of missiles. Uh, no person shall operate an indoor or outdoor amplified sound device on a residentially zoned property. Which produces an audible sound more than fifty feet. Beyond that residential property's boundary. Is defined above between hours of twelve A M. and seven A M. And audible is capable of being heard by the normal person. So it's. This ordinance may be improved by having some decimal levels and some measurements in which they would be. Determined, but frankly, if over fifty feet away from your property boundary, you can hear what's going on at your neighbor's property. That's a violation.
But not till twelve A M.
No, no, no. Until, that's right.
Twelve A M to seven A M.
Otherwise, that, you know, the state, there is a state noise statute that does have decimal levels that apply. At different times of the day, earlier than twelve. And that is, that is, I believe, a citation that the police can, can cite if they're aware of it. But we could, we could definitely bring this back. With some reduced hours and some more things to mention, you know, in order to get a conviction. It's a little hard to, well, I was able to hear something fifty, you know, paste it off. I could hear what was being played across the. Uh, but you know, with a decibel meter, you can get. Perfect, we'll stand up in court for conviction.
I'd like to see if we get hold what our neighbor, neighboring towns are doing and then see how a, have a further discussion of this, because I do think that is. I mean, so that they town of neighborly, neighbors, so we should all be being neighborly. You know, I hate to say. What you can and can't do at certain times, but when you are disturbing your neighbors. There's, there's a problem, so.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I agree.
We have a time of day when the. Skate park closes and the street lights shut down and stuff shuts down and then it's not midnight, but whatever it is, I think. Should just match that is my thought.
Well, we'll look at rifles, so, I'm sorry rifle in Newcastle and see what the noise ordinances are real quick. Make some proposals for, in both in terms of the time. Uh, and, uh. The information that would be recorded in order to issue a sentence.
Yeah, this is how we know what's going on, because we don't know exactly what's going on, but you know, that's why we need citizen input to. To kind of help us out to, you know, make us be aware of these things.
Okay, all right, all right. Um, at this point, Amy, do we have any raised hand?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, the, the time is seven o'clock P M. We will close the public, uh, comments portion and move on to the next agenda item. Uh, which is the consent agenda, which contains the minutes of the August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four board trustees meeting. Do you want to discuss any of that or make a motion?
May I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Motion by trustee Seabert to approve the consent agenda as presented, seconded by trustee Brettinall, all in favor? Do any board members have any conflicts of interest with any agenda items? Because I like, yeah, just because we are having executive session regards to that agenda item. If trustee Seabert has a. Conflict with the actual agenda item, we also have a conflict with the executive session.
Yeah, so the staff is requesting a continuation of the action item on that. And with respect to the executive second, you know, go to executive session and talk about. That request, so you can receive legal advice pertaining to the standard. Some issues that relate to that. Um, I, I guess trustee Seabert, are you? I, I guess you have, but the only, what I would have is.
I manage the facility beside this. So if for some reason. I don't want to be in the mid, if for some reason it was not approved. I can get financially, our business could gain, you know, as we would get ventures, so I just, that's where I would, just want to be careful to make sure. I don't want it to come back where, well, you were, you're a manager there, you had. Financial gain if it didn't approve, so. So I want to find on the executive session, I don't know.
So the, the, well, the, exactly, I think the mayor is correct, that if you have a. Conflict on the main issue, you should not sit down on the executive session. Uh, but the standard for conflict and interests is that you. Even through an employment relationship, would stand upon the materially or monetarily. Uh, through a choice of decision you would make on a matter of technical priority, and that is distinguished from. We talked about this before, because of the general public interest, you have something more concrete. Um, I, I'm not sure that, you know, every, um. Situation where something you're professionally involved in involves somebody on the same line that comes in front of the board, that's. Necessarily a conflict. You know, I think the standard is to try and. Uh, be careful around conflicts as opposed to. Press them. Uh, in the first instance, you have the right to say, you know, I'm just, I'm willing to step back on this, this issue. And if there are others on the board who. Are not happy with your decision, that it's ultimately a board decision, whether, uh, there is a conflict. In, in the first incident, it's up to you if you feel like the safer thing to do is to say, eh, you know, if we're in the industry, I'm gonna refuse myself, that's up to you.
I mean, I don't know, yeah, I just, I'm just trying to be on the cautious side, I guess. You know, rather be cautious than not, I guess, so.
So if, if, if you, if you're intending to refuse yourself, this is the time when the agenda to, to make.
I think I will, just that way, again, so you're excited.
Thank you for that. Does anybody else have any conflicts of interest with agenda items? Uh, do we have any agenda changes tonight? By staff or by the board? Uh, the next step is the water plant construction update. Come on, tell us all the good news.
Everything's free after.
Afternoon, I heard that, yeah, no financial thing, everything's free, so. I'll let you clean a tree now.
Thank you, uh, Dan Galvin with Garnier Construction. Uh, so this month's update. For the water treatment plant, uh, health and safety, uh, we continue to manage a safe site, no incidents to date. Uh, let's see, plant staff and visitors, uh, saying included wearing proper P P E, so it's much appreciated, uh. And, uh, working well for everybody, uh, especially with our heavy equipment moving around the site, so again, much appreciated. Uh, we continue with our controlled entry, uh, watching, uh, delivery traffic and other traffic coming in and out, uh, to maintain a safe and secure site. Today we went from hot weather to warm weather awareness, uh, crews did well making it through the hot weather, uh, staying hydrated, finding shade when necessary. And then we continue to watch, uh. Uh, the afternoon weather for lightning strikes coming in at those, uh, come within a certain distance, we take, uh, have the guys take shelter as well. Our construction progress, uh, some of the photos, uh, provided there, um. So our de-watering activity has been greatly reduced, we're down to one well, uh, as we get, uh, the last of our underslab. Process pipe in that is buried as well, as that, uh, activity, um. Progresses will remove that last de-watering well. Um, so the majority of our activities since our last visit, uh, is. Formwork and rebar and concrete for the building's foundation and stem wall. And that was the majority of what's in those photos. Those activities do include, uh, inspections from the. From the town as well as from the, do very representative on site, all is going very well. And again, uh, underslam pipe is the big activity now, uh, getting that. Product in will allow for the continuation of the building foundation where these, uh, pipes go underneath it. And then from there, we'll see the backfill, uh, in the very near future, electrician will continue with their work to get. Their underslam conduit in from electrical room, that way the power and signal that, uh, will provide the. To the equipment in, in the building will be in place. Uh, schedule, um, we continue to, to maintain our schedule, uh, as we've mentioned in the past. So a bit of a delay from when we first started, but we're not seeing that slip, uh, much further. And we continue to look for areas where we can improve. A lot of that has been our material procurement and, uh, delivery timelines have been improving. Uh, with our vendors, so that is positive. Budget, uh, let's see the contingency log, trustee Seabert asked about this, uh, one, there's none provided, uh, this month is it's a work in progress. Uh, the last few, uh, meetings, we haven't shown any, uh, changes on that log, so now we're starting to recognize, uh, the, the work. And so, some of those line items were for our civil work or excavation where we were, um. Just holding, showing the available dollars on there, and now that we've can, uh, made great progress with our backfill operation. We'll see, uh, some of those dollars come off that list and, uh, and go towards the cost of that backfill operation. As well, we've recently, uh, gotten our issued for construction documents, so following the. C D P H E approval and then a, a few other, um. Progressions with the design, uh, we now have essentially our final set of documents, drawing documents are working off, so there's some additional electrical changes there. Uh, that will impact our contingency log, uh, and a few other, uh, items. Uh, some H V A C changes or, um, upgrades when we, uh, went to different building codes for the control. To make sure that, um. It's somewhat of a green building, but again, some sensors and stuff, and rooms aren't being occupied, lights will turn off automatically, some of those. Controls and then again with H V A C, uh, just monitoring, uh, temperature in the room and movement and, uh, some improved controls there as well. And then as mentioned, uh, when the de-watering ceases, there'll be, uh, there's a pot of money that will come back to the contingency log as well. Initially, I think, I think we may have mentioned in previous meetings, but initially we had dollars in there, we went out to look for subcontract numbers. And they were, they were close to our budget, but they were high, and so in the end, uh, Garnier and K five construction self performed the de-watering. A little bit of a struggle, but, uh, financially a great success, uh, and so next month when we see the contingency log, there will be changes in it. But again, there'll be some deductions and some additions as well. Uh, the building to date, uh, just over four million has been built today for construction progress. Everything's moving along, uh, just fine out there. And with that, glad to open it up to, uh, questions.
I, uh, what's the underslam pipe being made out of?
Uh, it is, uh, steel pipe and the connection is a welded connection.
Oh, okay, then the yellow is just.
Uh, a coating for it, yeah. Protect it, and then it gets encased in concrete as well, and that'll be tied to the slab. So it should move which along with our, uh, backfill operation, everything would move together essentially.
Oh, okay.
And then as well, there's a cathodic protection component, uh, and then what that does is since this pipe is essentially inaccessible. This, uh, cathodic protection would, uh, deteriorate in lieu of the pipe deteriorating, that. Uh, that is monitored on a regular basis and it may be that can be replaced, so it helps the longevity of that steel pipe.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you.
There's no, uh, any back order or any equipment coming in, that's, I mean, that's gonna hold the site.
No, no, again, it's been all positive with, uh, procurement timelines, a lot, a majority of them have improved. Uh, one of the highlights there was, uh, one we've talked about before, the M C C with our electrical gear. Initially, we were tracking fifty-two weeks, uh, and they cut that in half to twenty-six weeks, now they're tracking, uh. Early part of the year to receive that, so another item that, that helps the schedule.
And I guess the building?
The, the skeleton, the metal building is on site, and again, we've gotten improved delivery dates for the skin of it or the, the insulated wall panels. And initially that was like, uh, a November, December, and now we're looking at like, uh, late September, uh, mid October for that.
Oh, okay, yes.
Yeah, well, we still have to get the, the foundation and the, the floor in, but again, at least those items are, the delivery days are proven, again, the steel is on site.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, I guess, uh, I've asked many questions about this de-watering, um. We gonna have any long-term effects on compaction or settling because of all the water that's been under this project?
No, um. Part of the backfill operation was to get below the initial designed, uh, excavation. Part of the backfill operation was to get below the initial designed, uh, excavation because of some of the soils we found. And then we installed a geofabric, uh, which helps bridge the layer between the. The fill we brought in and the existing fill and then the compaction effort, the material we brought in is goes together really well and sits in there tight. Um, and then it was a a controlled process, uh, with, uh, removing the watering wells. And then the time of the season that we're able to do it now after the the high water in the river. So it's, um. It all, it all goes together very well and then again, our timing have to work out. So it knows, you know, the the area sees typical, uh, seasonal high water and that'll continue, uh, but we we do not have a. A big impact on that or make a big swing one way or the other with the de-watering effort, so there shouldn't be, you know, a big swing moving forward either.
Okay, um, so I guess on the other side, do we? Um, the backwash tanks. Do we expect those to be full of water before next year's? High water of the river, are we gonna have a situation like when you try and put a pool in and it gets groundwater again and it lights the whole thing up, yeah?
Um, Du Berry is not online, just thinking this all, I I am sure it's designed by its weight to not to not flow, but and then yes, it will have water in it, uh. Before the high water activities next season, and if not, it's it's. It's been failed leak tested, everything, so it it can hold, it does hold water now, so should that be a concern? There would be no problem to, uh, to put water in at any time.
Okay. Um, and then has Du Berry regularly been onsite through this whole? Process?
Yes, they have, uh. A technical representative on site that is inspecting, uh, the construction and then when. Other third-party inspectors, be it our, uh, welding inspectors or the building department's inspectors are on site, um, and then we're not considering it as well.
It's a new feature, wasn't it?
New feature, yeah. Okay, and so I I assume that all the the subs, you guys, Du Berry, everyone has been cohesively working together?
Oh, very much so, yes, yeah, the small sites, there's not very many places to go, so yeah, 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 they're in our trailer, we're in theirs, uh, yeah, works out very well.
So well, okay.
I I can tell you, Du Berry is on site today touring, so.
Okay. Yeah, it's now a part of the contract, they're supposed to be onsite, so. Just wanna make sure that they're they're doing what they're supposed to.
And and we utilize them, uh, we communicate and then we utilize him as well for his direct line of communication to, you know, to the design professionals, yeah.
Good, all right. I like it. Anything else? Okay, all right, awesome, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next on the agenda is, uh, the wildfire risk analysis plan with Paula Steph, uh, with the middle Colorado watershed.
Pass a few of these to pass along, I have a lot to tell you tonight, so I'm gonna rattle off a lot at the beginning and then we'll get into the risk analysis. Joining me tonight, uh, virtually is Christina Pearson, and she's gonna share the presentation, which I believe was in your package. Um, um, and you can go to the next screen, Christina. So, uh, actually go to the next one. Uh, thank you so much, Mayor and trustees for, uh, allowing me to give me a look at the, uh, what we're doing with Middle Colorado Watershed Council, in particular, in. Uh, relationship to silt. Uh, and I want to thank you for the annual support you provided this year and hope that you can consider that again for two thousand twenty-five. Next slide. So we've worked on a number of different projects, but I wanted to make, and you saw two of them on that last side slide, but I wanted to make sure that you're aware that we're still. Doing some final things at the Silk Preserve as far as water rights, I was talking to, um, Mike Sawyer at the beginning of this meeting and. We're gonna meet again, trying to resolve what exactly needs to be done, uh, with Joe and Mike and Jim, um, as far as filing. Finalizing those water rights that we talked about on our board, uh, and that Mike presented, I think that was in June, uh, to finish up that project. We also put some new signage up at the Silk Boat Ramp to go along with that expansion that we did. Uh, and there's a picture of one of those signs there and just need to confirm with Joe if there's anything else that we need out there as far as signage, next slide. What I handed out to you was a project that we've been working on with C P W is, uh, around the non-native species in our waters. We all know that there are a lot of anglers that enjoy our river. Uh, and we want to make sure that if they come across a non-native species, they report it to C P W. The big one that I want to bring to you, I think he knows those villagers, uh, for zebra muscle that were found down in. Uh, the Camio area and I talked to C P W and what they'd like to really push out is. Public information and outreach, including an opportunity to, um, have maybe a boot cleaning station. Maybe at the Silk Preserve or other locations where our anglers are getting in and out of the water. We're not worried right now that they're here at this, um, length of the river. Um, but they are further down on the Colorado River, so we know over time, twenty years, fifty years, somewhere along the line, they're gonna come up here. And that's gonna affect things like your water treatment plant and things like that, so that's why we want to make sure that we get the public as aware as possible of cleaning their boats, cleaning the boots. Um, before they get them to the next water, next slide. Um, gravel pit restoration, I know the town of Silt is one of my main towns on this river corridor that has surrounded by gravel pits and. Um, we want to make sure that when the gravel pit operators go in. Um, there's an opportunity for them to consider extra restoration opportunities around their gravel pits. Gravel's important, it's construction, that's that's what we are all well aware of, but how do we take care of that riparian habitat afterwards? Next slide. Uh, and and how do we take care of it in advance and and what we've been talking about is the low hanging fruit going to, um. Old ponds, I mean, old gravel pits that have gone to pond or have had other things happen to them and get some restoration going there. Little bit pricier, what's really good is just having this information in front of us when we go to approve these plans, especially when they come down from the county. Which is where I've used them going, you know, are we making sure to do things to keep non-native species from getting in the Colorado River and that type of thing? So we've been working on this with Low Tech, uh, for the past year and a half and it's the best restor- best practices that we'd like to share with your P and C. Um, group just to have as a extra tool, uh, for identifying, um, things that we could do when we're looking at gravel pit restoration. After the gravel pit is, uh, complete. Next slide. Um, and it gives some ideas for restoration, I think one of our biggest problems with gravel pits, um. Is the steepness of the banks, even though they still stay within the realm of what the Division of Reclamation Mining Safety asked for. And Garfield County, which has higher, um. Parameters as far as what they're asking of gravel pit operators, I think it's good to know in advance of things that you could do to be ready for when that gravel pit. Closes down and when I think of this in particular, I think about the one next to the Silk Reserve that could possibly end up in the hands. Um, of the town of Silt, uh, and what we could think about as far as making it not only. Healthy environmentally, but also a recreation opportunity, next slide. And post Grizzly Creek fire, uh, we are at the point now of wrapping up, um, the funding in two thousand twenty-four for what we did in water quality monitoring. Uh, in particular, uh, the gauge that was, uh, at East Divide Creek above the town of Silt that. Uh, allowed extra information to go to the, uh, uh, Sarah at the water treatment plant. Uh, and I talked to her recently about did we need to keep that location? Um, and she is, she says that she's using the, uh, gauge that U S G S has at South Canyon and that seems to work for her. So just kind of following up and making sure that if you needed to carry this forward, um, we'd have an opportunity to do that. The other thing we're discussing is whether or not to keep some of our rain gauges in the canyon. Um, because weather patterns are so different throughout the canyon and. We talked to a number of stakeholders on, do you want to do that so that we can find funding to do it if if that is the case? So it's very nice to see we're four years past that fire, um, but at the same time. Those post-fire effects can last, um, five or ten years or even twenty years as, uh, the town of Glenwood saw a couple of years ago when they had. A mud flow come down, um, right near their water treatment plant from fire that had happened much earlier, so. That's gonna kind of lead to what our question of, I mean, our discussion about the wrap. Um, which is a little bit later, next slide. So, um, the wrap results from us building this wildfire collaborative on the middle Colorado River. And the importance of the collaboratives, what working cross-jurisdictionally, wildfire is gonna come, we want to be able to ready to work to. To work together with our towns, our river districts, I mean, I, river districts, our fire districts, um, our, um. B L M, U S Forest Service, uh, Colorado State Forestry, all these different entities that we can work together to mitigate, uh. Uh, the impacts of wildfire before it comes. Um, but we also received funding to do this wrap, which we will be discussing soon, a wildfire risk assessment that once wildfire comes. What should we be ready for as far as the susceptibility of our infrastructure in town? And Christina will be addressing that a little bit in depth, which is why I'm trying to give her more time on this, so that allow you to ask some questions as well. But the other thing that we're doing with the wildfire collaborative is Middle Colorado Watershed Council, um, has. Found some, uh, funding from C W C P and some funding from C D P H E and we have a little bit of funding from the foundation and we've been able to kind of. Run the collaborative, pulling money together at different locations, but we really need for a healthy collaborative, working, um, cross boundaries. And looking at regional projects is how do we make this collaborative sustainable, including, um, hiring somebody to lead the collaborative? So I've been working with different, um, members of the collaborative to say, what's the next step? Um, how do we hire somebody to do grant writing? When we look at the Roaring Fork, uh, collaborative. Uh, they hired a co- uh, leader, uh, two years ago and last year through grant funding, she was able to take basically, um. Find enough funding that it was almost a six to one increase in the amount of money that she was bringing in through grant funding. So that's what I'd like to do, I'm trying to help out the collaborative at this point by initiating some of those grant fund. Opportunities right now so that we can pay for a collaborative, co- collaborative leader, there's too many Cs in here, um. Uh, but we want to, we're gonna help to kind of get it off the ground with the steering committee. Um, Jim has been part of those conversations, Dave Reynolds, uh, Travis Elliott, uh, the fire districts, but it's like. How do we get this going, which may require a match to bump it off the ground from all of our, um, collaborative stakeholders that are part of the M O U? Other than federal or state participants, they can't put money into it, but. If we can get counties, towns, fire districts to put a small amount to get us started, we can get some grants out there and then, um, hopefully pay for that position within a year. Um, so it can carry itself forward, similar, I'm looking at kind of the outline that we've done with Roaring Fork Watershed. Collaborative and see if it can follow suit on what they've done, um, and then one of the first things that that person or we will have to do with the collaborative is create a five oh one three C. Because that's where a lot of funding opportunities happen when you have a nonprofit asking for those funds. So it's a big story and I need to get more in depth with you and Jim and at a different time, but what I want to do is give. Time to Christina, like I said, to talk a bit about this rap and what it means for the town of Silt as far as what they've seen from that susceptibility analysis. Next slide. Um, I do want to say that when we start to look at the rap, I want you to be aware that we are aware, we know that the county does a C W P P. Uh, Community Wildfire Protection Plan. Their intent on that. Is what do we do to prepare for wildfire, what do we do to mitigate, um, the impact of that wildfire, what do we do to lessen? Uh, how big that wildfire is, and there are a lot of projects that can be done, uh, as we go in regards to this, the rap. Is talking about what do you do after the fire and. I have to tell you, the town of Silt is my best example, other than the town of Glenwood. You guys saw this, you saw it with their water treatment plant, um, you saw it with the Silk Water Conservancy District, um, and their pump, um. Pump canal, uh, engineering room, we put, we were able to find a lot of funding to help, uh, mitigate some of that impact. Uh, and what we want to do is what can we do ahead of time so that we aren't hit with something in the future that may harm the town of Silt? Um, with some grant funding again. Um, so you can go to the next slide, uh, Christina. So when you look at pre-wildfire mitigation, a lot of those overlap for the mitigation efforts that you can do also for post wildfire. Um, and that's why they're kind of pointed out here for when you look at, uh, pre-wildfire mitigation, what, you know, mastication prescribed, prescribed burns, uh, fuel breaks, those kind of things, thinning. But what we're gonna also look at is things like sediment and erosion, uh, control. For, so that once a fire occurs, you know, you're a little bit more set up so that you know something may happen, um, and you've done some stuff ahead. To control that sediment. As you saw with, uh, post Grizzly Creek fire, next slide. So I'm going to take this time, like I said, this takes a bit of time, so I'm gonna let Christina go ahead and take over and, uh, drive this presentation a little bit further. But the idea in the long run is there are funding opportunities right now through grants, including the one that we got to do the rap, that now that we have a plan in place. Um, with this wildfire rap, we can use that to, um, use it for grants for actual project work. Um, so that's the intent right now is look at what you might be susceptible to, see if you want to do something and then explore opportunities to find ways to, um. Uh, mitigate what that impact might be to you post fire, so Christina, all yours.
All right, thank you, Paula. Hi, everyone, I'm Christina Pearson, I work at S G M as a water resources engineer, I've been working with Paula on the post Grizzly Creek and Pine Gulch. Um, water quality monitoring program and then I've been working on this wildfire ready action plan for the Colorado River wildfire collaborative. The wildfire ready action plan is part of the C W C B's wildfire ready watersheds program, which basically the state has seen. A lot of impacts post-fire from storm events across a lot of the burn scars that have been happening, um, well, you know, for a long time, but most specifically since. Twenty twenty, uh, the state wanted to then help communities come up with their own plans to try to be prepared for not just wildfire, but also what happens afterwards. Okay, so what is a wildfire ready action plan specifically looking at? Basically, we're gonna look, we're looking at, uh, five different types of hazards, which are these on the right side here, which is looking at erosion, flooding, debris flows. And water quality degradation and a fluvial hazard zone, which is not specifically mentioned here, but I do want to mention it specifically, uh, because. A fluvial hazard zone, which is the area that a waterway can move. Um, with, because, you know, a river, a creek, they're somewhat living creatures and they do move over time. That does not change with the fire, that zone that the waterway can move, however, because post-fire you do see higher peak flows in flooding events. You might see the river or a creek move faster, so we want to be very aware of what that fluvial hazard zone is on some of these smaller waterways in the watershed. So we're taking a huge hazard analysis for all these different hazards, we're then overlaying that with values at risk, so that's not just, um. Your aquatic ecosystems that are listed here, but we're looking at the building's life and property, all the building outlines in the area. The, all of the roadway crossings, so that would be existing bridges and culverts as well as possible, small areas that could benefit from a covert. Looking at all the municipal water intakes, including and all the agricultural water intakes. Canals and pipelines that may have already been previously mapped. And then reservoirs and dams. I'm sure I'm missing a couple here, oh, we have also looked at some of the energy infrastructure as well. So trying to look at all of those values at risk, which if you are quite aware, that's quite a lot of data and overlaying that with the hazards, then we're coming up with what we can. Um, what we can look at as each values at risk susceptibility to each hazard specifically. Like Paula mentioned. There's a great C W P P that the Garfield County has, it's wonderful. It does focus more on wildfire, looking at prevention and mitigation, warning systems that are related to wildfire to keep people out of the way and to keep people safe. And to protect property and all the values at risk. It does focus heavily on the wildland urban interface, the Louis, um. So that is very important, however, we're all aware and you especially are aware that after a fire happens doesn't mean that the hazards. You could face go away. Um, well, after the fire happens, in a lot of areas, if the burn severity is severe. You've basically, you cause basically this hydrophobic soil layer, which kind of acts as if the fire has cemented a watershed that it's burned. So now when you have rain falling on that watershed, it's in all flowing downhill, none of it's going into the soil, it causes all of these hazards we we have mentioned previously. So the wildfire ready action plan is trying to look at those and then identifying. Projects that could help mitigate that and sometimes they do overlap, like Paula mentioned, they can be prescribed burning, um, other. Chemical and mechanical treatments to the landscape to try to. to try to make the burn severity less severe and possibly mitigate from that perspective. However, there's also a lot of other post um post-fire hazard mitigation. So that would be things like water quality uh monitoring, warning systems that are related to storm events over a burn scar. That can be uh armoring intakes, that could be uh armoring culverts and bridges, upsizing infrastructure like culverts and bridges and whatnot to handle floods. And then I missed one of the pre-fire ones and that can also, and this could be post-fire as well. That would be stream restoration, specifically trying to reconnect flood planes to the waterways to let the environment act a little bit better like it used to uh to be able to attenuate a flood as it comes down and really kind of tamp down that peak flow and help out with flooding downstream. So I sort of talked about this just now, but all of the different, these are all the different types of pre and post wildfire mitigation activities we are working on connecting to the different uh susceptible values at risk. Now, like I mentioned, there's a very large amount of data with this because we're looking at all the values at risk across the entire study area. Uh, we've put together what's a story map to help really disseminate that information and make it a little bit less overwhelming to look at. So I'm going to go ahead and um shout out of the presentation here and show you this interactive tool that's come out. So just give me one moment to which one I'm sharing. Okay. So this is a story map that we've put together for the wildfire ready action plan for the Colorado River Wildfire Collaborative. This is specifically the study area. Um, you can see here, this is Elk Creek watershed Rifle Creek in purple and then what we're calling the Battlement Mesa area watersheds. That's really just because we didn't have a better name at the time for to identify all these watersheds that sort of run from the west side of Silt down to Debeck. So for each watershed, we do have, we will can walk through the different types of um hazards. I'm just going to jump to Rifle Creek so we can be a little bit closer to the Silt area and talk about um some of the hazards we're seeing there that could be impactful to the town of Silt and the area areas close to that. Um, I wanted to jump to the Rifle Creek first because that is where Grass Valley Mesa Harvey Gap fills from. It fills from East Rifle Creek. This, these are all of the susceptible values at risk in the Rifle Creek watershed specifically to the debris flow hazard. Um, and I'll show you a little bit more. So the shaded areas in this map, let me zoom in just a little bit. Um, are the specific water, uh, specific debris flow hazard risks. So all the red ones, these are smaller watersheds that are highly susceptible to debris flow post fire and then kind of green is just a slightly more susceptible to debris flow hazard post fire. It's not that it's necessarily, green is good. A green just means it's not as bad as red. So that's kind of how it works. Um, then we have little triangles, which are all of the water rights, um, the headgates. The crossings are little diamonds and it's kind of harder to see getting down to buildings because they don't really scale up. Lines in this area usually are um, a lot of times are roadways, but they could also be uh pipelines or canals. So we get back up to this one, so we don't have, sorry. Okay. So zooming in on East Rifle Creek here, this is where Rifle Falls area is up here. This dashed line that shows up in yellow, and I'm not sure what size this is showing up for you also, if you can actually see this, but there's a yellow dash line that kind of turns into orange. This is the Grass Valley Canal specifically and shows different segments for where it may be most susceptible to debris flow um as it kind of flows down towards Grass Valley Reservoir down towards Harvey Gap. Um. So what the reason I bring this up is it's just a good example of something that we can identify and help because it's now identified in this rap. Help if the silt water conservancy district wants to go out for funding to help prepare a um area. They possibly already have issues with debris flow, debris flows happening and rock fall. And it gives them another way to leverage grant funding. Um, seeing it has already been identified in a planning document. It also would let us talk about areas that possibly prescribed burning or chemical and mechanical treatment to the landscape might help prevent debris flows. However, in this area, it's a pretty steep hillsides in some of these areas. So even with um some burn, it's burn severity mitigation so that prescribed burning, you might still see uh debris flows post fire just due to the steepness of the terrain. Okay. I'm jumping around also because the these study areas, as you may have noticed, are slightly outside of Silt. So we don't have anything that studies studies specifically um right around that includes the town of Silt. That's how the wildfire collaborative, what they chose to study. Okay, so this is the area, the Battlement Mesa area. They do, it does include these watersheds that are just west of Silt. And we can take a look at for this one, just flooding risk, flood after fire susceptible values at risk. It's a lot of data, sometimes it takes a second to load. Um. So just looking just west of west here, we can see there's a couple roadways that are susceptible to flooding post fire and that just has to do with their their um proximity to creeks and different creeks, like what's the right word? And I'm failing to bring to my mind basically the drainages that are in this area. You can see some um just very small little areas that might have a couple of small buildings that it might be at at risk and just helping identify those so that we could possibly do some projects ahead of time. But also so that if a fire does happen, the we can be pretty well aware quickly when the fire is happening, what might be susceptible to these different hazards and we can immediately start with the jump on doing projects at that time and not having any delay in the process to try to make sure we protect as much as we can post fire. Anyway, this is a tool that we're very close to finishing. We're still technically in draft mode. So I do need to have one more review on it, but as soon as we get that out, we'll give you a link to this so that you can explore it on your own as you want and see what what is at risk, what are susceptible values at risk in your area um that you might be interested in and want to have any input in how it is portrayed in the rap specifically. Back over to the station. Okay, and then the final thing I did want to talk about. Okay, so once we have jumped to the beginning, once we have the susceptible values risk, we've talked about that already. We do have this uh report that we're putting together and it does identify projects by area because this is such a huge area we've been studying. It looks at the different projects we could do and it is identifying all of those in a nice narrative to be able to refer to in the future. And that's all I have. Paula, it's back to you.
Thank you Christina. Um, so bigger picture here, there's we've taken, we've got together as a wildfire collaborative collaborative in two thousand twenty-two. Um, we started to identify both uh wildfire and post wildfire risk. We've looked at it regionally and we've said, how do we make this work so that we can share the burden of what the kind of projects that need to be done last um uh May, uh beginning of June, I went out on a couple of potential site visits with Colorado River Fire Rescue. BLM Forest Service, we looked at a place on the uh other side of parachute called Wallace Creek. Uh, but we also looked at Grace Grass Mesa, which I try not to, um, there's so many grass kind of things. But um there are two projects identified in those areas that they are starting to work on. One has already gone through an EVA approval, the other is still in the midst of it. I've had project committee meetings with uh the wildfire collaborative, probably um at least six to eight times on what other projects need to be done in the area. Each of these fire districts is already working on their own projects. Um, as you probably know, Colorado River Fire Rescue, which protects you, um, has some projects that are going on in East Elk Creek right now in Elk Creek um this last year. Now they're starting to look at what other regions need to be taken care of. So the idea with grant funding, which is kind of where we come from, uh and what we do is how do we work on projects across these boundaries? How do we say we need to take care of all these different regions? And as Christina said, this is a large area. Um, but the more that we can kind of share that, the more we can say we can get this project done um that would benefit uh the town of Newcastle this year, but next year we need to work on this project and start looking at the town of Silt. And the idea is if we do this regionally, we can have a much bigger impact and we have much more possibility of getting those grants. So that's why we're bringing this all to your attention. Silt is a part of this collaborative and we appreciate your support and as we built it. Um, but to really be successful and see what some of these other groups are doing um in the area that are also collaboratives, Eagle County has one, uh Mesa County has one. There's some, there's some work going on in Rio Blanco County with their collaborative. And now it's like the middle Colorado and how do we make this successful? Because there is so many funds out there and it's such a concentration of effort from the state and federal level uh because of the amount of wildfires that we're seeing in the West. So um we started out as watershed health and it's still important to us as Christina mentioned earlier. Um, you know, a healthy uh watershed uh makes a difference in what your post-fire effect is. Uh, but we really do have to work together to make this successful as well. So I hope you will consider that as we look at where to go with the collaborative and and how we go that and how we can um help each of our communities here. So that was a lot of information. I still have five minutes and I do want to make sure that I give you guys time for questions. But I do again want to say, um, I so appreciate um the town of Silt and being able to work with you on all these different projects.
Yeah, that is very affirmative. Thank you. I don't, I don't have.
I was going to ask about it being able to just peruse that website that she was looking at. So I look, I do look forward to getting the link just wait to nerd out on that for a while.
And and when you do get it and you nerd out on it, make sure to call me if you have questions.
Okay.
Because it is a lot of information. Um, and there is a lot of ne- neighborhood outreach going on with all the collaboratives. So I brought some of these that we pass out from Colorado State Forestry. And this is the part which that is really important that the community gets involved. What do you do in your own HOA, your own neighborhood, your own trailer park, your own home? Um, that would make a difference, even if all you do is clean your gutters and that's all you can do, that's fine. What what about keeping trees further away from your house? Because if we can keep our homes from burning and we can keep our uh infrastructure from burning, um, that's going to put us much further ahead than needing to pay for money to rebuild those. And as you know, with the water treatment plant, that's the last thing you want to do and I can leave some of these if you'd like.
Good, thank you.
So I guess the question is, do we know how much funding you're asking for in the town of Silt?
We have, we have begun looking at that uh and we haven't solidified it because we're trying to put a budget together. The last time we spoke, it was in the range of five to ten thousand, ten thousand, right, Jim? Um, to get us started and that would be an equal match from all the towns on the in the collaborative. Thank you.
We're, we're going to have to work on that alarm. Oh no, this is the alarm button. No, it's yeah.
Getting closer.
Oh, that's what that is.
Kristen liked the beep 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 beep, so I changed it.
You're on the clock when you come to Silt.
Oh, I see, I see. Okay, usually I get a big flashing three minutes. Um, so and then we're looking at the county as well and presenting to the county um next week on all of this so that they're aware of it. Um, either through the county directly, through other funding opportunities. That's another reason to be a five oh one three C. It's easier to get funding from the county when you're a nonprofit. Uh, and then um Garfield County Emergency Management, Chris Bornholdt has been to a number of our meetings, both as a Rifle City Council Representative and as uh Garfield County Emergency Manager. So that's been helpful in directing us and stuff. Um, so that's what we're looking at right now. We don't have a solid number, so I'm sorry I don't have that.
That's good.
Uh, but you can think ten thousand right now is probably a good starting point.
Okay, and then what does it cost to hire a coordinator? What's that?
So we've been, I've been going to the other collaboratives and we've kind of come into a range of um roughly somewhere in the eighty thousand range seventy to eighty-five, somewhere in there. But it was really kind of what also is the cost for um employee costs and that type of thing. So trying to keep all of that um and all of those kind of different costs that would be part of hiring somebody. We have talked about middle Colorado, maybe managing that for the first six months or so to we can get somebody in place and get some of those grants written and that type of thing. And that's where that initial funding may go to is kind of supporting the work um as needed to to manage that, maybe create the five oh one three C. There's so many pieces that you got to kind of get doing to get things moving, so.
Okay.
And I don't know if you want to add to that, Jim. We do need another meeting. We've met.
We've just started through the budget process, kind of. We did a little brainstorming on how we were going to fund things.
Something's good. I know we'll be a budget very soon, so.
Yes.
Okay, right. Um, but once again, it's great to work with you guys and I hope that we can make this a success because we know it's going to happen.
Yeah, there's a lot. I'm also interested to show on that website. There was a ton of data on that. That site to
Yeah.
Go over and see what's going on around here, so.
Camping spot.
Yeah, yeah.
That, that's part of it. It's like we have so much land. I mean, a lot of this is Garfield County, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you Paula and Christina for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And I hope you'll be continuing support for middle Colorado next year too. Appreciate it. Thank you so much. Sounds good.
Right. Uh, next up is the Uzone update for twenty twenty-five funding.
First off, thanks for having us today, tonight. We appreciate it. Um, I'm not usually in this seat, usually ally or development directors here. So uh this is a little bit out of my comfort zone, but I I am the director of operations and do a lot of stuff on the backend. I'm pretty familiar with where I work. And so I just wanted to talk to you guys a little bit about where we're at um these days. So we sent you guys a presentation, I believe. That looks like our flyer.
Yeah, driving the bus.
You're driving the bus?
I'm not.
No? Uh, keep coming down. Or we could, we could, I'd like to come back to that, but let's start here. So, yeah, um, I don't know, I have familiar, I think you're all pretty familiar with Uzone. Is this like a, oh, here's Uzone again. Maybe someone need a refresher to where we're at. Um, as you know, we, we provide a lot of care and assessment to our youth and our community uh from the whole ninth judicial district. So continuing to the next slide, um, you know, we, uh, that's a little dated as far as the ninth. Uh, we actually go all the way up to what's not dated. The picture is just inaccurate. We go all the way to Rangeley, Meeker, then down to Rifle here, Parachute, all the way to Aspen. And so we serve um a pretty large zone. That's Rio Blanco, Garfield and Pickin County. And um, we're one of the only organizations in the state that actually does CYDC, which is I'll get to in a moment. You have one client from Silt that was a CYDC client uh last year and that's um generally felony level crimes. Um, and so we handle all the way of that handing over to probation at that point, but all the way down to small town misdemeanors from smoking pot in the bathrooms, those sort of things. And so, you know, it's, it's a pretty special position that we're in um as far as to really provide comprehensive care for our community. Um, you know, and our goals are always based off of reducing risk, right? So, you know, we get into contacting uh different, you know, um individuals for however they come to us. We don't realize whether that's the beginning of some of just showing us that if they already have a lot of risk factors in their lives and there could be high recidivism in the future and there could be higher risk of crimes and felonies. Um, and then at the same time, sometimes kids are just teenagers and they're just getting in a little trouble and can catch them then and give them some positive habits to give the alarm. Uh, but it's, we're in a position to really help any individual that comes to us regardless of where they are in the risk continuum. Um, and you know, so we also have a lot of family outreach and we've been working and developing with a new family coordinator in the last year. We've been developing that position. Um, it's going well and we're learning a lot in that process of how to actually support parents. We're realizing that that's a really important element, right? When we're actually working with the youth is what's going on at home? Well, how can we help? What are the things we're facing? And more often than not, we're looking at a lot of parents who have kids or getting in trouble. It's just the parents are working full time. And when I say full time, like maybe two jobs, right, and more. Uh, and so that's just, we get such good data to figure out what's going on in our community and how to actually support our, not just the teens that are getting in trouble, but also the parents. Um, and uh so that's been a big push in the last year and also increased our mental health supports. The one thing that we've done a lot is we've shifted away from trying to have an in-house, in-house sort of like licensed clinician. The one thing that we've done a lot is we've shifted away from trying to have an in-house, in-house uh sort of like licensed clinician. Or actually realizing we can get better and more diverse care, um, if we actually have contractors. So we've got about five to six individuals, um, and just a really diverse array of both male, female, Spanish speaking, English speaking, to really meet all of our clients' needs, um, no matter where they are. And I think that's been a really big improvement. Um, as far as, and then of course substance, right? That is a big elephant in the room for a lot of us. I'll get to our actual local referrals for Silt in a moment. But uh, without a doubt, we've seen that just go through the roof um pretty much since COVID, which is we've all seen a lot of those impacts in a lot of different ways in society. But one thing has been substance for youth, right? We see a lot of marijuana, a lot of alcohol, um, but of course heavier use as well, unfortunately. Um, in the, you know, throughout the whole district, it depends where they are and what they're getting into. Um, and so we're putting a lot of efforts in that. We have a hu- we have a really awesome substance team, actually. We've got three CAT certified uh uh sort of care providers um and case managers. We're running groups these days, which is actually really cool. Most groups are in person and kids are showing up. And we're getting them, you know, we have one, we have uh one full-time group in Rifle and we're generally pulling Silt kids from there. And we also have one group every other week. So every other week it alternates and then one we play with. Um, and so Silt kids can be going either direction to those. But that's a really powerful experience for them to just be around their peers to talk about this sort of stuff. And but we're gonna try to sort of deal with substance and addiction at young ages um and exposure. So uh, and the last is we've got uh restored justice, which is I think a really, really powerful tool that we have, especially for uh, you know, medium risk to low risk cases, sometimes high risk, but it's better in the medium low to, to low risk. We're really sort of doing community repair. Um, you know, if someone, the classic kid throw a rock through the window, you know, someone owns that building, right? And to be able to get that person who owns the building in that room, we can talk about that far. We can really start to actually give us some theory of mind to the kid, give them some empathy to understand what's going around uh their community rather than just them just trying to grow up and go through puberty. And so we do, I think we do really a lot of good work and I would say it's pretty holistic and we're trying to do our best to do wraparound services. And on that note, um, sort of jumping around here, uh, but you know, uh, just to jump back to what we really scream for substance use, alcohol use, optimism and problem solving. So we actually have a sixty questionnaire, uh, six, sixty question survey that we give every client when they come in the door. And if this is the thing to really assess them on, how, what is their substance like use looking like? And that's generally part of drugs, you know, and just, and then we have alcohol. Um, and then we have optimism and problem solving. So there's, uh, it's a bit strength based, right? It's not just, you know, looking at deficits. It's also like what is going well for the, our clients, uh, delinquency and community engagement? Like how engaged are they outside of just their, their, their day-to-day lives? And then of course, if there's trauma and all the different elements of trauma that, that go along with that. Um, where can I go from here? Uh, I think at the core here, I'd like to say, I mean, we're offering so many services to clients throughout the whole ninth judicial district, but specifically to Silt. Um, I'll probably jump ahead a little bit here, but when you actually look at the Silt data, um, you know, in twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, we do this fiscal year that starts in uh, in July every year. Um, we saw eighteen all Silt residents. Um, and then eighty communities members served. Those are gonna be the people, the individuals, the families that come in and actually support the youth. And then of course, and sometimes school administrators. Uh, and then of course, we've got five hundred and forty total service hours. It costs us about two thousand dollars per client and that's a pretty like, that's a pretty uh conservative guess, I think, or estimation actually. Uh, because sometimes we have clients with higher risk would work with them for six months and so that's double the time. And that's, um, and we are really trying to retain, keep and retain a really high quality staff and case managers. Um, and we are doing our best to have competitive wages in a really expensive place, right? Um, and so uh, that's, you know, we're, we're doing our best to serve that. But in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, we've actually bumped the number to twenty-seven. We did bump the number uh, the teens. Uh, a lot of our kids found themselves, we had twenty-seven clients come to us from the, from our actual Silt residents. Um, and then of course ninety-three uh total community members served. That's generally the community around the clients. Uh, and that's a total of eight hundred and ten service hours. So uh, we definitely put a lot of our resources to really help out the kids in this community and every other community in the ninth judicial district. So um, I'd be happy to answer any more questions about that. If you guys have, uh, the three highest sort of incidents we have is marijuana, harassment and theft. Um, so those are the three most common issues we see coming from Silt specifically. Um, we can really break down the data in a lot of different ways. Oh, cool. So you're with us. Um, as far as just theory, if you want to know stats, sixty percent male, about forty percent female. We've got uh about forty-eight percent, well, and actually I found the, the local statistics a little bit more interesting for you all when I was looking at this, I was preparing today. Uh, we're actually at thirty-three percent female from Silt and sixty-seven percent male. Uh, we have almost eighty percent Caucasian, twenty-one percent Latino. Um, hundred percent, I mean, I think this is one of the coolest statistics of, from us across the board is um, especially in Silt is a hundred percent reoffend while working with you. So I think the second we have contact, we start working with them, we're building healthy relations with, with them. And that's really improving our care, or the, the outcomes of the work that we're doing. Um, we've got uh, what else did I think were some positive numbers? Um, you know, ninety-four percent were able to complete their contracts successfully. That's one of the metrics of success that we have when they come to us. We build a contract that's looking for different, you know, addressing traumas or perhaps risks while at the same time developing the more pro-social behaviors and trying to support the uh, support the teens as they're growing up. Um, and uh, that, I think that's pretty cool, that ninety-four percent. You know, sometimes some, some students or some clients do drop off the radar a little bit and they, they, they uh, we have, we don't give them and then they fail to complete their contracts successfully on time. Um, so that happens occasionally. Yeah, so I think at this point in time, um, you know, we're, we've got a pretty big team. I don't know if you're running the, if you want to go to the next slide, uh, our support staff, it's gonna be Jamie Hayes, uh, Ally and myself. Um, and then of course, uh, we're gonna be the sort of administrative staff. And then of course, we've got Naomi, Vanessa and Tanya um as our sort of uh, we've administrative assistants, data specialists and uh business manager. I think the reason I'm highlighting this is that we spent a lot of time and effort in developing a team that is high quality and really can help us serve our community, our community needs. Um, our, our team, we can go to the direct service staff. I think we're close to fifty percent native speaking Spanish staff members to really address the needs of our community. Um, and then of course, we have high quality substance coordinators. Um, and then we've got uh a great, actually, to put a pause and really emphasize Paula and Aaron here. We've got Paula as our clinical director. It's really overseeing all our client care. If something's happening or things get more complex with a client and maybe that client lives here. And so where we start to realize there is some clinical concerns, we have, we, it's not just the case manager that's working quite on their own there. We have a fallback that can really help us assess what the needs are, make sure moving forward, right? And then I don't know if you guys know Erin Goodman, but she is, she lives here in Silt and she's a wonderful uh asset to this community and also our organization. Uh, and she's been working with us since I believe twenty eighteen. Um, and so she's really done a great job in uh building and maintaining really, really strong man uh relationships with, you know, town prosecution, town managers and all our town, or all the communities I've worked with. So um, I think that I can really stand behind my team. And if you guys have concerns or questions, you can tell me now and I'd be happy to fall through and clarify anything that may be going on. Um, with that said, uh, you know, we're, we're uh an organization that's in a really interesting position to serve the whole ninth judicial district, but that doesn't make Silt any less important in that whole process. Um, yeah, you're a vital part of our community and we really appreciate you guys and we really appreciate the support you've given us in the past. And um, I didn't get the numbers on my way here today as far as whether we're increasing the ask or keeping it the same. Regardless of, we really, really value and appreciate that partnership. Any questions?
I have a question about your two point four million dollar annual budget. What's the general breakdown, yeah, between administrative costs versus helping clients?
Off the top of my head, I don't know that answer. I could definitely get that to you for sure. Um, as far as, you know, I do run payroll every month and I think that uh, that is no small expenditure. And when I'm looking at that, we have a large, large direct service team and I, and I'm very proud of the team we have and we're doing our best to, to. I mean, I think that's a sort of what you're looking at, administration versus direct services or administration versus actual cost per dollar going to every client. Um, whether they're getting services from, you know, one of our um, one of our uh counselors that we contract out. I mean, we could, I could work on getting those numbers more accurate for you. So that's a great question.
And then, I'm only curious because there's this increasing trend where nonprofits are eighty plus percent administrative costs. And I, I don't, I know.
I would tell you for sure that's not our case.
It's being normalized in a lot of different ways and I'm just trying to ensure that it's not happening in this case. I don't believe it is.
Yeah, you know, I think to be honest, if you were to look at those slides, like I don't, I don't have, I apologize, I don't have the slides right in front of uh, right in front of, I really just catch it up on that letter in front of us now. But um, the, give me one second. You know, when you look at this support staff versus direct service staff, like right there, right? There's, there's a lot more people and um, you know, and I, well, you know, I really prioritize making sure that our team has a competitive salary in a place that's pretty hard to, to retain. I mean, we're working on a lean budget. We are a nonprofit and we're both state funded. Um, or you know, we get grants and then we also get contributions from towns and then we also get client fees as well. Um, so, yeah.
Then I have, I have a second question that's related. What non-fiscal needs does youth zone have from your surrounding community? Like other than making sure you have money to run? Are there other things that you need that the Silt community could provide?
Yeah, I think the number one thing we could use is really, really, not that we're lacking it, but just only improve collaboration. And when I say that, um, so the, my main department more so than development is really working currently with all our uh communities, police departments, town managers, um, and school districts, school administrators and sheriff's departments. Um, and then of course the VA's office and making sure that we are collaborating as much as possible. And that, that doesn't, you can't buy that, right? That's a lot of spending time. And so I grew up, just last week, I was up in uh both Meeker and Rangeley meeting with town managers and, and chief of police. And the biggest thing that I'm learning in this process is really trying to clarify what we do. I think oftentimes a lot of people are like, oh, you so, like you all just like fix kids, right? And you know, and, and, and you know, that's not what we do. What we do is we, we are, we start at the ninth judicial district. We have the CYDC contract that mandates that we reply, we, we provide diversion services to any kid that is facing those charges, right? It starts there, but then of course it goes all the way down to that first time the kid gets in a fight, smokes a cigarette or whatever it could be, right? And I think, you know, with that element there, um, I sort of lost my train of thought. I don't know. Uh, I apologize. Or as I go on that, I don't know. Just ranting at this point. I don't. So, um.
It's been a long day.
It's, yeah, I start my days at eight AM, so, yeah. I'm lying. Did I answer your question? I apologize.
You did.
Yeah, so it really, I wouldn't, that's right. Your question was about sort of partnerships.
Yeah, and it's not in lieu of monetary funding, it's in addition to monetary funding.
Yeah, I mean, that does help pay my salary in order to do that, right? Going and meet those people. So, you know, when you, when that money comes in, that really helps us to make sure that we're, we're doing everything we can from the behind the scenes to the, the front, client-facing care.
I have a question. I'm very grateful for what you guys do. I think it's, I've seen when someone has a charge early in life and it follows them the rest of their life. So it's nice when you can have that safety net. The young people not turn into a criminal. It helps change the trajectory of their life in a very significant way that is going to benefit our community.
Thanks.
So I really.
Yeah, and I really do believe it when I say it's improving these partnerships and these, and you know, hearing what you all need to figure out how we can adapt and change. And you know, we, we get all our own data internally, you know, through our assessment and stuff. But at the end of the day, it's, it's helping us to come back to you guys and say, hey, we are seeing this. You guys seeing this? And we're all, we're all seeing this. And you know, how can we better continue to work that? And that does create that safety net. That's more than just us, just you guys. So thank you. Appreciate that.
And we talk about, I mean, we just talked about, you know, which we kick kids out of the skate park that we want to let them be there or like, you know, pro-social activities and different things like that. So, you know, maybe that's another resource that we could, you know, ask you guys.
Absolutely.
Ideas.
We would be happy to consult with that and no costs associated. No, I mean, absolutely. That's a tough question, right? Like it's, you know, I was, I was talking, I was talking to Kurt, Wilson, I think Wilson's the Chief of Police up in Carbondale the other day. And he's like loves the skate park and he's also like, any given day, he's like, I could tell you to buy kids that are there right now, you know, like. And so it's like, it's an interesting dynamic and learning how to deal with that asset in the community's complex is my point.
I don't have anything. I saw where you're requesting five thousand dollars from us this year and I figured it out. So it's like, if you're going by the twenty-seven kids, it's a hundred and eighty-six dollars a kid.
I mean, in our, our, so we, we request that every kid that comes to us uh pays two hundred dollars of their own to sort of do that. And it's a little bit of skin in the game sort of concept there and, you know, but that's so small. That doesn't cover our costs and you know, the hundred and eighty per kid barely covers, it doesn't cover, it, it, it supports, but it's just, it's a small step along the way. And it's a, yeah, I think it's a pretty reasonable ask personally as far as just, you know, so we appreciate that and thank you. Yeah.
Um, I've got three things. Uh, the statistic of a hundred percent did not reoffend while working with youth zone. How many are reoffended after the three to six?
It's a great question. I was thinking that right after, when I was reading it myself, I was like, I'm sure there's some numbers. You know, the truth is, is we do see recidivism and to say otherwise would be disregenuous. Um, I do not have those numbers exactly. And I think when I started my presentation, I think it's tough. I, I think we've all lived enough to see that some people can figure these things out with little direction. Some people need more direction and, and unfortunately that does beating the justice system. And, and that's the direction that some kids need when they get to that point and they do ask for it, right? And we get kids that are in really, really tough situations, um, whether that's self-imposed or put on them by no choice of their own. And you know, we do our best, but we can't see track of the safety net's only so great. So.
Okay. Um, and then I just, I don't, you write. I think last year we were actually fifty fifty female versus male.
Yeah.
That went through the program, so. Um, have you guys dug into the data to see why maybe it's heavier male now than it was?
I mean, I would say maybe a bit of a statistical anomaly there. I mean, the numbers we're talking about are relatively small. I think organization-wide, we tend to be about sixty-seven percent male and you know, the remaining thirty-three percent female, right? So I think that, that, that tends to be our norm, you know? So I think that this would just be a swing.
So last year was probably just a, an odd year, maybe?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, yeah, I think we're close. I mean, and you know, if you average them, we'd probably be somewhat, right? So if we're at that sixty-seven percent, I think, well, that's a great guesstimation.
Right. All right. Um, and then I always have to say, you know, like Chris asked, like, you know, it's a hundred and sixty-seven bucks a kid. Um, you know, I always bring it up that is that something that the taxpayer should be burdened with? Or should those kids be asked to spend? I mean, you put the two thousand bucks into this and it costs to get you through the program because you got yourself in this program. Now, I know there's a, there's a balance there between what it costs to send a kid to, to jail for this program that I'm always on the fence of whether we should be funding a program that, you know, someone got themselves into. And I think if, I think if a kid spends, or a kid or his parents are spending two thousand dollars, maybe it's a little more of an impact than throwing out two hundred bucks.
I think it's unrealistic to ask every community member that have come to us for two thousand dollars. I think that that's, you know, we are trying to stick with the justice system. The US justice system has defense and defense should be provided for free, right? And so if a kid's standing in front of prosecution and you're trying to ask them to do that, I think that's a big ask to say you can't get your freedom, you can't get your care unless it's two thousand dollars. I think that that's a, I just generally push back and say that's not reasonable for the majority of our clients. We serve more than just Aspen, right? And so um, that'd be my first response to that. And I think the other part is, you know, we view prevention and intervention and it gets muddled. You have, you, you found it yourself earlier, like a hundred percent no recidivism while you're working with us. Um, that's a strong evidence of that intervention that's positive, right? But you know, it's, it's, you never know when you're catching a kid on the continuum of their own lives and where they will find trouble, right? And I think if you're gonna find them at that point, I, I think four hundred dollars from the community or two hundred from the community and two hundred from the family. By the way, it is a sliding scale for our community and we don't get that from everybody. And it's, we do our best to try to, to get that because we do think there's benefit for a kid to have to say, sorry, Mom and Dad, I did this and now I don't have a job, so you've got to pay this or whatever. That creates some extra potential buy-in right there. And I think um, the other element would be, you know, it's uh, it's, 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 it's prevention. I think that more often than not, we're seeing less recidivism than more, right? And I think that that, that data can say without the data in front of me, I know that for sure, right? The amount of kids that just come to us and, you know, we had a kid walk in the door and we worked with it and he just, he was a unique kid. Uh, but he walked in, he had a lot of cash in his pocket and he said, how can I give this to you guys? And it turns out that he was a client five years ago, right? And then he's been doing work, doing job and he just was like, I didn't, yeah, I want to give more to you guys. And to me, I just think that that's, you know, that's just one of those success stories, right? Those are the nice ones, the feathers to wear on a cap that are nice to have. But I think it's a low cost ultimately to the high cost of not taking care of our kids in our community to, to. And then you said so yourself, the extended cost of that kid does find themselves, themselves in the justice system and detained and they're not attending their cost in tax dollars and that. And in general, we're a diversion state, right? Like the amount, but D, DCJ has dropped funding because of how effective and how low cost this guy, I mean, which means that we're getting less funding to do this, this thing. So obviously I've got a lot of strong feelings and opinions on this and I think that we really appreciate your support. We can use anything we want to get. So, yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask for some clarification?
Sure.
I'm, I'm looking at the twenty-seven intakes that you have and I'm curious. I'm, I'm looking at the twenty seven intakes that you have and I'm curious, uh. I work in the municipal court and we didn't have near that many kids come through the courts. Are there other avenues that these kids from? Inside of city limits are coming to you from?
Absolutely, yeah. So these are residents that live in silks. Uh, we requested to give that data to you all, so, um. They are, you know, they could be getting tickets at school, so maybe they're going to either, uh, they could be going up valley or down valley to another high school potentially. Um, they also are, you know, our community is very transient. A lot of people have friends and parachute or rifle or. Uh, Glenwood Springs and so they'd be at a party and they get a ticket there. And so then they're getting a Glenwood Springs to a ticket and going to that municipal court. And at the same time living here.
That could also be just a referral before they get in a. A symptom for our parents, you know, I have a problem with my kid, can you?
Exactly.
So it's not always through the.
Thank you.
Criminal justice.
Yeah, exactly. And and I think, you know, majority of our referrals do come through the, the justice system. Um, and then of course, uh, I, the, the numbers were in the presentation. I sort of was jumping around a little bit, winging it, but. Um, I believe I can give you those. Yeah, so, yeah, seventy percent are coming straight from corporate, twenty percent are going to be the pre-ticket of referrals that we see oftentimes. That's why that collaboration of working with law enforcement and to give them those options and whether they can pre-ticket or not really matters. Um, and they really appreciate those options. Their practice. So, yeah, we get, uh, we get, it's a very complex matrix of actually how we get our, uh, clients. So.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Yeah, we appreciate you all.
We'll be hitting budget here soon.
Great. Thanks for all the work that you guys do, actually. I really appreciate it.
Uh, next item on the agenda is going to be an executive session for a conference with the town attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice. On a specific legal question under Sierra section twenty four dash six, four oh two four B. About water system improvement and access.
And I would add that this specific point relates to a. Uh, request. To receive out of town, uh, water service that the town has received. A thing to. Legal advice on those standards.
Mayor has to be, uh, excused from this next, uh, agenda.
We will grab you when we're done. Yeah, we, yeah, I'm about to slide that table, shut the door. So we. I'm gonna read this.
Sheila, do we, are we doing a separate recording? And do we need to go into a?
I wasn't planning on recording it. I was going to pause the, the Zoom recording. I believe Sheila still will have the, uh, audio recording in the, in the room.
That's correct.
Yeah, we do need an audio recording, but this should not be part of the public, uh, recording.
Correct. I was going to pause it once the mayor read that you were going into executive so that that would be part of the record.
Okay. Um, so I will make a motion to go into the executive session. For a conference with the town attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on a specific legal question under Sierra section. Twenty four dash six dash four oh two four B, water system improvements access related to a request for an out of town water tap. Uh, motion made by the mayor, seconded by Mayor Proton Hanahan.
Trustee Seaford, trustee Poston, trustee Inglehart. Trustee Klassen.
Hi.
Trustee Brettinol. Trustee Hanahan.
Hi.
Or Mayor Proton Hanahan, sorry, Mayor Riechel.
Hi.
Uh, most carried unanimously. We will now take a quick recess, get that all set up.
Thank you.
Not yet. Uh, the time is now nine forty two PM and the executive session has concluded. No formal action was taken in the executive session. The participants in the executive session were. No one entered the executive session and no one left the exact, the executive session. For the record, any person who participated in the executive session will lose any substantial discussion of any matters not included. In the motion to go into executive session occurred during the executive session. Whether any improper action occurred during the executive session in violations of open meetings law, I would ask that you state your concerns for the record. I've seen none. The next item on the agenda is. Our resolution number thirty one series twenty twenty four.
Alrighty, the Congress saved an application for free up storage to obtain out of town taps. Staff recommends a continuation of a public notice action item for the free of storage application. The town is diligently working to process the application of free of storage submitted. However, the town needs more time to work through the outstanding variables. And there is a recommended motion for the continuation and I'm happy to answer any questions we can have.
I don't have any questions.
Would you make a motion to continue?
All right, Mister Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to continue the free up storage out of town water service request. Second.
Okay, well, we have a motion by trustee Clausen to, uh, continue the free up storage out of town water request. Uh, was seconded by Mayor Proton Hanahan. I guess all of them favor.
Bye.
Next up, the broadband update.
You asked for it, you got it. And, uh, there's very little to report on the broadband, uh, initiative at this point, simply because. Uh, we're waiting for the final project area maps to be completed. Um, the county indicated that they will likely be working with all the ISP providers. Uh, uh, that showed interest, um. So I don't know what that means for the rural, rural areas and what it ultimately means for our ability to. Move forward with the project, but we're basically in a holding pattern at this point.
No ETAs?
No. The project area maps are a state level. Deal.
Every generally before you send it, RFQs, yeah, have those maps.
Not the way this project is working, apparently.
So we want you to bid on something, but we're not going to tell you what size it is or how many people are in it, but bid any.
Like, goes right back to my, here's our budget for a government project and here's our bids we get. I'm, I'm studying this, this, this is amateur. And I don't know how else to say it, like they, they're doing step three before two and what, how did any ISPs even know enough?
I.
To, to send in qualifications.
Uh, they, they were sort of the, the RFQ was so general in nature. It's basically, can you do this?
Can you connect two wires? Come on in.
Yep.
I can do that. Very clearly clear. Thank you for providing it. I, I'm not shooting mess and just that this is a long. This is a long ways off. Traditionally with. Projects of this nature, the, getting the infrastructure down the highway and getting it cross-connected at this, the meaty center would be. More cumbersome steps. It's surprising.
I, I don't disagree with that. My editorial comment stands.
And I, I, I'm not going there. One monopolist to another, no thanks. Yeah, I, I appreciate you doing the order, Danny. I may, I may dig into it a little bit myself and see what else I can find out then at least. I know I beat the line up that they do something. Good, isn't that?
Yeah, we got a broadband?
I'm not sure that we are doing a broadband.
We know we have one touch to you, gonna confide it.
Anything you'd like to highlight in your?
Uh, well, I, you know. After the special legislative session, we have a rather. Cumbersome, mucked up property tax system. That is going to be very difficult to deal with over the next several years.
Sounds like.
Um, the, uh, the state did no one any favors. Um, and I, I feel for the assessor. Trying to track all this and figure out, uh, what they're going to be doing. Uh, beyond that, um, wanted to highlight or bring up a little bit more about Home Avenue. Um, as you may have heard from residents, as you may have seen, we have. Not been doing any work for the last couple of weeks. We ran into a, a significant. Section that had horrible sub soils. And have been working with a geotechnical engineer to, uh, figure out our best solution. To be able to put a pavement back, uh, driving surface back that will not fail. Um, we believe we have a solution at this point. I don't, uh, um. I ha- I have to, I have to say that, uh, anytime I get recommended that we attempt to do something to stabilize. I don't really like the sound of that, but, uh, it seems that this is our best option. But the, the piece that I really wanted to highlight is. Um, the total cost of our, uh, over excavation is going to be in the realm of. Two hundred thousand dollars, um, which will significantly increase the cost of the overall project. And as I indicated in my, um, uh, report. Um, we had some. I wouldn't say they were heated conversations, but they were frustrating conversations about why didn't we have a better idea of what was underneath and. We, and, and number one, this project was over budget to begin with. Um, and two, now we've run into a significant, uh, uh, problem with the soils. I mean, the talent's living up to his name. But, uh, uh, in the future, um, we've concluded. Between Director Lundie and Engineer Walter that, uh, we're going to have to do some more. Um, investigative work prior to bidding out and. Estimating projects and that includes. Doing additional bores so that we know what we're faced with. If we do them every hundred feet, there's still gonna be areas that we're gonna maybe miss. But we're not gonna know the extent. I mean, how many feet are we talking about that we ran into? This is like three hundred feet, four hundred feet. Right now, we're about two hundred and fifty feet. Two hundred and fifty, yeah. If we were every hundred feet, we would have known that we were going to have more bad soils. Um, so it's just something that we're going to need to do in the future. It's going to add some minor costs on the up. Upfront side of a project, but it's gonna help us avoid. A huge cost over. We know it's gonna cost, we have better cost estimates. And we'll have better cost estimates. I mean, that's the other piece is that, uh, previous estimates were not, uh, generated by our engineer. Um, so they were guesses. We're trying to rectify that at this point, but we're trying to get good numbers in our project and process. Um, beyond that, um, I mentioned the CML District eleven meeting. Um, which is September twenty sixth, uh, we ran into a hiccup with that. Um, as it, uh, the, if we move forward with the fall leaders forum, they cannot do it on the twenty fifth. And we would have to do it on the twenty sixth, so that would preclude us from attending the CML. Uh, uh, meeting. Um, I can tell you that Alpine Bank has graciously offered to, um. Uh, cover the cost of any of the alcohol and beverages at the, at the forum. Um, and if we still want to move forward, uh, we'll get a, uh, invitation out this week. And we'll hold it on the twenty sixth from five to seven PM.
Mr. Tuvu, the one. That trustee Poston and I went to, I think everybody got two, two drink tickets and then it was a cash bar out. So Alpine would only be responsible for the tickets.
Correct.
That's great of them.
You said, oh, well, prices higher.
Attendance would go up.
But I, I can tell you that, uh, uh, Mayor Wussell, uh, when I spoke with her. Um, indicated that of the forty or fifty people that attended, they didn't go through the number.
No.
Yes, yeah, so. The chances are most people won't be using their two tickets. But if we're still interested, we'll play forward with it and do it on the twenty second instead of the twenty fifth. So I just kind of need. A yes or a no on that.
I'm still very interested with my idea. I'd love to go to the CML thing, but I think the chance to show up still, especially based on the feedback we got today during our tour. I think showing forty or fifty more people.
Yeah.
While we're working on and. While we're evolving is, is really good, especially because a lot of those stakeholders are gonna be the ones we're gonna be working with on future projects.
Yes, agreed.
I think it's important on going both those days.
Uh, and then, uh, the last thing I'll say is on Thursday, I'll be at the Regional Transit Coordinating Council Summit. In, uh, Cristo. With that, uh, unless anybody has a question for.
No, I guess so. So you guys have a fix for Home Avenue? Are you still worried?
We have a test.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
That's the part that I don't like. I don't.
Tempting does not sound like, I want to hear, we're stabilizing.
I, I, I wanted to hear, Ed, we can do this and that'll take care of.
Little geotechnical fabric, just like the.
We've tried a lot of different fabrics. It's best way it was correlated was trying to build a road on a water bed.
Nah, yeah.
We're gonna put weight restrictions on the road.
Yeah, seventy pounds.
You have my, I forwarded the email to you from the prior, the trend, the mass transportation group that had met previously.
Yes.
Will any of those parties be at this RTCC?
That's my hope. That's why I'm going.
Help maybe restart that conversation.
So we confirmed the result. I think it's now the twenty sixth, not the twenty fifth. Correct. And we will get a, uh, an invitation, an invitation out yet this week. And we'll start, uh, doing the outreach to the, you know, all the people that we want there.
The other update from Saturday. And board comments. Trustee Clausen.
I have nothing to.
What?
Yes, I have nothing and I am.
Move on.
Yeah, trusty fever. That's where I talk. Next, go.
I got two questions. One for where are we at with our on-ramp? Isn't that supposed to happen until like twenty five or twenty six, he's going on there?
Oh, but he's bound. You know, I'm not sure if they've done all the surveying. So I'm assuming that's under engineering right now.
That is good. I was actually gonna ask when she was on for that one, but I didn't know.
But I can check with.
We were, I know a brother was like twenty five or twenty.
My, my understanding it was a twenty five project.
My question for you, um, we always have. You know, meeting with the county commissioners, I kind of, of course, we've got election time coming.
You know, meeting with the county commissioners, I kinda, of course, we've got election time coming. I kinda hope we keep it on our radar. They are actually planning on, uh, holding the county board meetings here on Monday. I have to confirm that with. Um, county manager. Um, because they have a hard stop at the middle because we have a court. But they have planned to be here Monday. Yeah, I'm not, I'm sorry, not this coming Monday is the.
Next Monday, a week from today.
A week from today, yeah. I got it right. Guys, we always had joint meetings, you know, stuff. So I just wanna make sure we keep that on our radar even after the election. If it changes still. I think we have one one month a year or twice a year, whatever it was, it was kinda informative to them. So. Just thought about that, kinda keep it on our leaders. Okay, that's all I got.
Trustee over.
Um, I. Saw something on social media and I, it's an event. That I got tickets for and I just wanted to share with everyone. It's. Presented by High Water Farms. It's a harvest dinner and it's gonna take place at the Painted Pig. On September nineteenth. Um, and the farm will be providing farm grown produce and proceeds for benefits. This amazing organization that promotes availability of nutritional food, addresses local food scarcity and promotes youth involvement in front of you. That's just a summary from a friend of mine, but. Um, so that's an event related to High Water Farms.
Where is that?
It's in Carbondale at the Painted Pig. The restaurant. And so if you, if you go on. I think I went on the High Water Farms website. For. To purchase the tickets and you just add them to your cart. And there were a couple of other events on there. That might be of interest as well. So looked like really fun and. Important. To me, so. Worth sharing. That's all.
Okay. Trustee Brettinall.
Um, great time with the, uh, concert, right? Went up there, I didn't get it till nine o'clock, so I got home late from work that night, but, uh. Those are always a great time. I see Chief K coming out of his phone pit. Or the, was that what it was? A phone pit thing? Yeah, it was. Lot of fun being had up there and I got to hang out for a couple for the last hour. So it was a lot of good, it was a good time to, to know, well, it's a great to see a big concert like that, the kickoff in, in the year.
Mayor Proton?
Yeah, just to reassert, uh, what trustee Brandon L said, uh, overall a great event season, um, bigger events, more of them. Better attendance, um, more food, more activities. Just a, a, a thank you to Nicole and team for. Really pushing the envelope of what a small town can do when we set our minds to it. Um. I can't wait to see what we do next year. No pressure.
Well, we're not done yet. We saw Main Street.
That's true. Yeah, that's right.
Fireworks.
Yeah, fireworks.
And fireworks. Uh, secondary, uh, or second thing, uh, thank you to Rep. Velasco and her chief of staff, Sophia. Uh, for coming out and spending some time out. And so I said it before with the, the leaders forum. Getting those people to come out here and see what we're doing. They, they were very impressed. They love the, the preserve. They love what's going on at the water plant. Think the more people see and learn about it and what, what we're doing here, the more they're gonna be willing to help us. That's it.
Good. Okay. Uh. Have we ever gotten update on the four wheel drive trail of this world? From the BLM? Whether that was gonna go forward or?
Uh. You know, that would, I, I, I'll have to do some research on that. I have no idea what that even is, but.
Uh, north of town, yeah, um.
I know we cleaned it up several years ago.
Yeah, four wheel, uh, the four wheel drive. Group around here was working with BLM to actually get a signed trail up. At that east side, I don't know. The BLM ever proved it or not. I don't know. I'll have to find my way back up there. Okay. And then, uh, same thing, yeah. Great concert, phone pit was wonderful. Your clicker stopped at a thousand.
Yeah.
So. Don't know how many people were actually there. Um. I took some time at the end of the night to go talk to all the vendors that we did have there. Um, they all praised. Nicole and Dusty as being the two easiest people to work with for any event that they attend. So that says a lot for our staff. Um. They all want to come back again, so hopefully. We can continue building on that, so. All yeah? Next item on the agenda.
Endurement.
Motion by trustee Brettinall who adjourned the meeting, seconded by trustee Claus, all those in favor.
Hi.
All opposed?
Miserable fail.
Motion carries unanimously. There you go.
So before trustee Inglehart and I take all the garlic, does anybody want any of the garlic? I would like a couple of these.